All right. I think we got everyone we're getting. You all set, Robin?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg Plan and Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 12th, 2018. Thank you all for attending. First order of business is the approval of the June 13th and July 11th, 2018 minutes. Any corrections or additions to those? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. Thank you. The next order of business is the following public hearing item. Petition of Lynchburg Investment Company, Inc. to rezone approximately 14 and 7200 acres at 2820 and 2842 Linkhorn Drive from B-3C conditional to B-3 conditional, B-3C conditional to amend previously approved proffers to allow the construction of a 127 space parking area. Tom?
Members of Planning Commission, this is a fairly simple request, but it is asking to amend proffers. The property was originally zoned to B-3 conditional back in 1981, and then subsequently it was requested to amend proffers in 1983. That's an important note. And at the time, it was proffered substantial compliance with the plan. This area where this parking lot is proposed was not shown for this magnitude of improvements. Thus, the necessity to amend the proffers. The proffers that were submitted by the petitioner references the 1981 date, that is, in error. The proffer should state March the eighth, 1983 in order to be correct. However, Planning Division does recommend approval of rezoning.
Who is here to speak on behalf of the petition?
What you see in front of you, the owners are from Orlando, and she apologizes for not being here today. She expected to be here. Their engineer is from Nashville, so traveling to here right now didn't seem to make the most sense. So they asked me to stand in for them on the presentation portion of it. But we did the layout based on the engineer's request up there. And the dash line that you see, kind of a trapezoidal shape, hopefully you can see it up in the north part, the north section there, is where we're referring to making a change from the earlier conditional rezoning. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think there were supposed to be some buildings that would go in that area right there. If you look, right now it's just an abandoned lot is what it looks like. It's overgrown, an area. From our initial investigation of the soils and everything, it looked like it was a place where, from the eighties on, it was a good dump site for excavation. And it's not something that we really want to put a building on in the first place. In fact, we don't even really want to put a parking lot on that material the way it stands right now. So after, maybe I should say, if we can get approval and get this started, we'll do some engineering to kind of shore up that base that would be under the parking lot in that section. So, Convergus has already moved in, and I absolutely love working on projects of older buildings that were abandoned that had been repurposed. This is one, this, the old Kroger that we signified there. Convergus has already moved in. They have about 200 employees already. They would like to get to about 325 is their operational number. Or maybe it was 320. But in order to get to the 320, they already see that they've got a need for parking there. And so that's what this would do. That would give them the parking that they would need to ramp up to the full employment they'd like to have. I guess there's one part, and part of the Planning Commission, I'd love to have had an answer for you. We submitted to TRC, had the full intent to do a traffic study at the signal there to add these extra parking spaces in. And it just turned out, the Tuesday after the flood event, that College Lake hit, and because of that detour, it really directly impacts that signal right there. So we haven't been able to sit there and do a count because it's been impacted. We went to do it this week, and we did the detour again this week. So, it's just amazing how this thing has been impacted by that. But, in talking to the traffic engineer, it's something that we will definitely need to have addressed, but we could actually even do it at the site planning stage, design stage, if we needed to. But, we have all intents and purposes to do a traffic study. We just haven't had the chance to do the numbers. And we would handle stormwater. The lighting, I think, is on the site. We're looking at putting two lights in the islands, under the newer ordinances, under the ordinance landscaping as well. Tom, when we went through the, or the planning staff, I shouldn't, I don't mean to actually blame Tom, going through the planning staff, we had to make an adjustment to put a landscaping island in the middle of it to sort of, in effect, be under the new ordinances for having that much parking and should have landscaping in the island interior to the parking spaces. So we have that too. So, this adds 127 spaces total to that parking lot there now. And then, the owners, they will then dedicate spaces for each of those businesses. That has not been discussed yet. They just know they have a need, and so that's what this is about.
We may call you back up. Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed?
I'm not in favor of all of us, Tom, but I have a great deal of knowledge of this property.
All right, sir. Sorry, if you could come up front and sign in, please, and tell us your name.
My name is Steve Venky. I'm with Fox Crest Developers, and I live behind this. I'm bringing it down. I mean, there's, I mean, I've walked this property 50 times or so due to some other issues. Basically, that's really not your concern, it's mine, but this whole property has a major problem with water runoff anyway. And it was used as a dump by multiple people, the city being one of them. So the side slopes off of it are basically straight down, and they go straight into creek. And that creek goes right behind my house, runs into a creek that goes to a pond at my development, and then goes into the one that's between Randy Nelson and the Bed and Breakfast, Randy Nelson's father and the Bed and Breakfast. And there's so much water that's not going into the, their drainage or whatever, it's going straight over the side, it's called massive erosion. And there's so much trash there, it needs to be picked up, and the side of that slope needs to be addressed, because it's about a one-to-one slope, if not steeper, you can't, you can't hardly even, you couldn't walk up it. And it was not done with any type of permits, there was never a dumping permit, and the toe of the slope is the creek. And so they had zero provisions protecting from runoff, dirt runoff, trash, there's tires, tires in the creek, there's building materials in the creek, there's concrete in the creek. And it is, it is so full of garbage all through there, it's unbelievable. I mean, basically, it's a lot of leftover concrete, trees, whatever. So that sediment pond needs to be at least double their, their stormwater management pond needs to be at least double that size. They could extend their driveway or parking spots further into the property with less damage to everything around it than going towards the creek on the right side where there's that stormwater management pan, I don't know how much they think they're going to pay for that, but they're going to have to dig out a bunch of asphalt and concrete and tar buckets and tires, no telling what's in there. It was 100% illegal dump site, and that's where they created the land even do this. So, they never got any permits to do any of it. And as you can see, the slope on that right side, I mean, the lines on those, those are not two-to-one, and that is man-made. It's not, it was a steep drop-off valley, basically, going down to a creek. So right now, the problem is, there's no guttering behind, behind the Kroger parking lot, behind 2844 section, and there's one drain back there, and that's always clogged, and the water goes straight over the top, and there's eight-foot by, eight-foot by 100-foot rails in the thing. And the biggest problem I have is I'm being sued for it, okay? So, I can't, this cannot be a pollution site and more runoff happening. I'm still in a lawsuit, been there for 10 years, for me, and I have a study that says I'm not doing it, and it won't drop it. And this is a guy's on city council, so he's just going to let you know. He says, Dad, it did it. And are suing, and he knows I didn't know, and won't drop it. So, this, this whole right section has to be completely addressed.
Okay. We've reached the end of your allotted time. I'm going to...
Well, this is a major problem. I mean, it's not even, it's not a small problem.
We'll discuss it, but we've reached the end of your allotted time. So, I'm going to ask you to return to your seat, and I'm going to invite Mr. Warner, if you'd like to come up and respond to any of these issues, you're more than welcome to.
I mean, I guess I'd like to say, if what we're proposing here was not approved, I can tell you that the problems that they're having, it's just going to continue having. What I can tell you is, when we get this approved, we're going to do an engineering plan for this part of the parking lot. We also have detention to do. The reason we didn't go farther to the north, and it's one thing we didn't mention, is there's an actual line of deep markation between the zoning. And I don't know if on that third sheet of the plan that we gave you, it shows that it's a different zoning. It's residential in that area, if I recall correctly. So that line there is kind of our坎cross line for us, or it would have kind of opened up a whole different type of request that we would be asking. So we actually are staying back within the original 1981, 1983 request. So as far as what Steve has mentioned about the erosion and those issues that were with the, in the litter, and the stuff that happened with the original Kroger Shopping Center, is absolutely a fact. There is some erosion that is going on over time. That's not so much what we're petitioning here. We're, in fact, we may be able to help with some of that when we get through to the engineering portion of it. But, we are really not there to fix what happened in 1980. We're here to add to the parking lot and detain what we can, and if we can fix those things, we'll do that as part of our plan.
Thank you. At this point, public hearings closed?
Can I say one other thing?
Only if someone on the commission wants to direct a question at you, which they are more than welcome to.
Steve, what else do you have to say?
Well, it would make sense to allow them to go deeper, because it would work out better for everybody, and allow them to get the correct water runoff. As opposed to when, more of the right side of the property is so steep and unusable, they're not going to be able to do the job that they can. It's not going to make, it shouldn't be any more expensive to go deeper than wider. And it would work out better for them to do the project and them to do it correctly. That's what I'm going to ask.
Tom, I guess, is there a possibility of permeable paving here? If, and if they did that, would they still need a retention pond?
I think anything is a possibility. It would be a matter of how the calculations works. I think the permeable pavers would probably most likely help them with water quality, but not necessarily quantity, depending on the soil types. I was unaware of the brevity of the erosion on the backside, and I don't, I'm not sure that our environmental people were either. I didn't see any comments about that in the plan. What I think may be beneficial is to request them to go visit the site and do some more research on it. Because, knowing that, I don't think we could, in good faith, recommend that you make a recommendation today. And Trent, I'm sorry about that, but, you know, if it's that much of a problem, I think they should be looking at it.
I think it would help by doing the parking lot and putting in the pond is what I'm saying, but it just needs to be located differently. You don't have a million dollar lawsuit over here, you have 10 years.
Is there, Tom, is there any, who at the city monitors that kind of stuff? I mean, on the, say they didn't want to build any more parking.
It would be a combination of mainly water resources and maybe Kate Miller in our office, but more likely it would be water resources looking at the impact on the streams.
And is there anything they can do after the fact, when, I mean, can they?
That's a very good question, and that's why I think it would be beneficial to request them to look at it and come to talk to you about it in person.
Well, I agree.
Taking that question, what? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
I think it'd be interesting to see more detail on how the stormwater's handled and the runoff implications, and, you know, especially in light of what we have going on in the city with College Lake. So I would, I would like to hear...
You got the same thing, it would happen to Crane Hill Road, because Randy's dam is breached, there was a twenty half...
Just a reminder, we aren't accepting comments unless you're called.
I just want you to know you got a problem. This is already at the top. You don't have to listen to it.
To hear more, to hear more, like, hear the city, some more information from the city, the water quality, water resources people, I'll ask myself.
Yeah, I looked back in the TRC comments, and they didn't make any comments about that. So...
What, can we table it? Is that what you would recommend, postpone this until we have...
I think, yeah, I think tabling it until, what would it be, September?
Twenty-sixth.
September 26th.
Twenty-sixth, and requesting that water resources go out and look at the, look at the backside of that property, look at the stream, and asking Trent to make, you know, look at the channel a little bit better. That might give you more information to render a decision.
Weird is something like, this is the wrong word, I realize, but, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Because ultimately, Trent, if you look back at the 1981 plan, there was no improvements on this. So, the plan, I've got it right here, and we can look at it if you like, but...
Yeah, it was back in the old days where you could just dump and go. That's why I was excited about fixing this. That's why I was, part of what my opportunity here was, is to engineer and get this thing.
So do you think, I mean, is the pond just capturing water from the new parking lot, or capturing it from everything?
Well, we would have to do that, but I certainly wouldn't, in the design process, I wouldn't let something that's, it would be unprofessional of me to allow something like that to continue on. I couldn't allow that to go on. And there is some erosion that's going on there. I can't fix what's gone on for 20 years. However, I can make sure that it's not going to continue on. But what's happened off-site and off-stream, I can't go down and fix those type of things, legally. I can't even do it. But for what...
But you could fix your, the banks that are on your property.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely.
And is it, is it true, like, so permeable, talked about permeable surface, you know, I think the gentleman who was here, I mean, that would just exacerbate the problem in some ways, because it would just kind of, he, you know, the subsurface is pretty nasty, apparently.
Well, the thing about, what we have to do when we do permeable, we have to actually, it's a really thick layer of stone bedding underneath it. So, it, what it really does is it sucks the water down and keeps it from sheet-flowing over to the detention pond. So, it slows down that water ultimately, even in water quality. It just doesn't, for the expense that it is, the reason you don't see a lot of it is it's expensive, and it doesn't do as much filtering. So as far as bang for the buck, literally, what you get is a biofilter. So that's why you're seeing biofilters more than you're seeing pervious pavement, because we just don't get the treatment level that we get out of biofilters. So, that's why you don't really see a lot of pervious pavement. In some instances, you can, but it would be difficult. We do look at those things. So the first thing we would do is detention, then we go look at water quality, and then if the water quality can't fit in that structure, then we look at pervious pavement. So those are all the steps that we take to mediate those things.
You can give to that stuff, you know, this is not, I mean, I don't think this is necessarily a Lynchburg problem, but the grade back there is phenomenal. So this is the wrong word, but at what point in the process, and I guess this is an open question, where do we start looking at soil stability? Just, do we put anything there? Because we can't hold on to the ground. I mean, I would imagine erosion, whether you put something back there or not, particularly with the rains we've got, is going to be phenomenal.
I took our geotechnical engineer out there, when I first saw it, and I brought him out there to look at that material, because I didn't trust us putting a parking lot onto something. So that's why he said that, that we would end up stabilizing underneath. So what we do is we put, take out the bad material to a certain depth of five feet, I think is what he said, and then we would put in blanket matting type thing, and then we restabilize it so that the structure of pavement isn't going to settle. As far as side slopes go, we would end up having to work with the landowner to see about stabilizing those slopes and allowing those. So there are things that you can do. Have you guys noticed on segmented block walls, as they go up, they have like this fabric that goes behind them? That fabric, you can actually put in earth, and it's a mechanically stabilized earth slope. And so it's almost like a retaining wall of that material without the wall, and so you use the slope. So there are some vehicles that you can do that would improve it. So just to expand on how you do that as a city, so what Tom mentioned about the, you know, us people going and seeing it, then that, then you contact the landowner, the city, and then he has to get something done to fix that, those things. And then someone like me would be called, and we go in to try to remediate...
Remediate.
Thank you. Remediate that slope and fix those things, or erosions it's caused. So, it's, I guess not exactly with what the group out of Florida here is, they're sort of penalized by what the existing ownership and what has happened over 20 years. All they're trying to do is get it parking so they can get into their... But, with that said, if I'm doing parking and I can fix something while I'm there, that's what we would do.
Can you tell me where the slope, I don't understand...
It's right above that little pink area where it's got, where his hand is right now. It's right above there to the north.
It's going that way, but the stream is going to the right.
So where those trucks are parked, there's a little low point right there, where you can kind of see where those points come together.
Right.
And then a pipe shoots out beyond those pine trees.
For the whole parking lot, or for just the new one?
I believe it might, I think it may be for the whole parking lot.
Okay. So it doesn't slope back down to whatever is...
Linkhorn.
Linkhorn.
Here's the, here's the stream right here.
Okay. So it goes into that stream, and then, I don't know where he's talking about, that Randy Nelson lives and his property is...
That's what it is, it comes up here to Link Road, and part of that here on Link Road is the Bed and Breakfast up right here, and then it has its own...
There's old proffers, in order to build the shopping center, they had to build, it's like a 20-foot tall privacy fence that's there. It actually blocks, even though with all those trees, you would think that it's blocked, you can't see it, but they had to build a privacy fence as part of that. The deer don't want to see it. As part of that original development.
Well, the issue, I mean, the thing about it that makes it, puts a little bit of finer point, Tom, you talked about this, is, you know, because I started looking at this after College Lake, I mean, all this stuff ties together, and it hits Blackwater Creek, you know, right there below, right on the other side of Link Road. I mean, so it all feeds in there, so you end up with some, you know, fairly, fairly major stuff going back into the James River ultimately. And so, I mean, I know some of the creeks were back there, and I don't understand how they all ran together, but...
So the erosion, just to let you know, is below where the creek is. There is somewhere that pipe outlets that comes down, but it, where the main creek runs out, there's some, some pretty high intense erosion on, below. Now, I'm not sure that it's associated with the original field, like you mentioned, you know, I did not recognize that. I noticed there is rubble in the field slope, but a lot of the erosion I saw was much farther down.
I'm just talking grade, I'm not talking about anything, I'm just talking about what you have to do.
Stabilization.
It just, I mean, if you look at the way that whole section runs, and there's thousands of them here, five, six of them in Lynchburg, it's just because of the grade, because of the gully, essentially. I mean, all, right behind where we're living now, it's, there's a huge gully back there with the, essentially, wet water creek, but given the year we've had, you know, it's been, it's been pretty bad, and you're going to get a lot of runoff.
Is this kind of borrowed?
That's the slope. That, in essence, is the slope that has been the dump site for you.
But it's almost going to be all remediation, to your point, Travis, because there's no place to put, there's really, I mean, all the stuff that you normally have for runoff, there's no room, you know, put it, I mean, you can only make the pond so big, and there's no place else to put the pond on the side of a hill.
So what happens in those cases, what we end up doing is going underground.
Yeah.
So we end up with piping underneath.
Sure.
The problem with what Steve is mentioning, I don't know if you can pull up the lot lines, but where he's mentioning is really, essentially, it's off-site.
Well, it's off-site.
If you go, yeah, so I'm not...
So I was looking at, like, where they're recycling, and I see it ends at the recycling, but there's a parking area behind that, you know, is it just a lease issue that they don't want to actually go that direction? Because there's still a significant amount before it gets into the R3 along Fulton from there. So if you, you can see where the, well, he just pulled it past it, but, you know, if you look right there, see the, you see where the recycling bins are, and then there's a lot on this side of it. Maybe that's what he's talking about, is moving that direction more towards Fulton, because there's this, there is a space, you know, still within the zoned area where you don't go into the R3.
I mean, quite honestly, the only thing they were really doing on the right was readjusting those parking spaces that are already there. The only number of parking spaces they needed are what you see in front of you, and that's for convenience of Convergus. So, going farther away from Convergus and going farther to the left, and you're right, it does slope away, but it really doesn't make sense for Convergus to do that.
Well, I think that's what he was talking about, is you could actually move that...
Well, no, what he was actually trying to do was go farther north.
Oh, is he thinking of going towards, more towards his house?
Yeah, he was thinking of going, yeah, it just didn't really...
But this is approved, right?
No, it's...
That's the edge of the land.
It's down by those homes.
Slope starts.
It goes down about where your cursor is there, and then it enters down.
All right, but wasn't this, the slope that was...
I know, would you have to put, would he, is he, like, suggesting you fill in?
This is an eroded slope, right?
Right.
And this is the same area, which is right, right at where you want to build your parking lot, which is right in this area, correct?
But we're going to stay on that flat spot up here.
What I'm getting at, though, is you said it wasn't on your property, it wasn't on this property, but a lot of the erosion issues are on this property.
Okay, that's, those, those slopes right there aren't the ones that's eroded. If you take your mouse and go to the right and up, right in there is where his, is where the pipe is just...
Isn't this the same owner, though? It's a different name, but it's the same people.
Possibly so. I really don't know. I didn't even know who the owner was, I just knew Lynchburg Developers.
I'm pretty sure, yes, you should check into that.
So, I'm going to use this little pointer. So my question is, like, this area right here, and if that's kind of a little bit more difficult for Convergus employees, but it isn't any more difficult for the people in here, so why don't they just use this and exchange that? It seems to be within that same area, unless there's some lease issues with the city on recycling, they can't move, move that. I mean, to me, I think, I think it would be good to have more, more of a area for catchment and move the, move the parking towards Fulton, because it's still within that areas that zone B5 or B... B3.
Tom, I, I agree with, with the theory that maybe one reason is that those businesses in that, those two buildings are not as high, I mean, they don't have as many employees as Convergus. They don't have, they don't have cubicles, which I guess Convergus must have. They're packing three hundred people.
We are using that area. I mean, that, if you look at our drawing, we do have ten or...
It looks like it stops right, it looks like it stops right behind. I was just thinking, like, if they went further, see, recycling to remain, where it says five standard spaces, that area that's open with slope right in here, right, now this doesn't work, my battery's dead, but a little bit beyond that way.
We just wouldn't do that. That's just such a far distance to Convergus.
It's like, a lot of people walk. But I know what you're saying, that, but, you know, it's funny, I go by there all the time, and the lot is rarely more than three-quarters of the way full. So to me, it's not even...
It is now.
I was over there this morning, and it was packed.
Yeah.
I was amazed, cause I was doing the same thing you were. I was like, well, what's the big deal? And I drove over there, it was, I'm gonna, not, I'm gonna get about 10:30 in it.
Yeah.
They ain't laying line.
I mean, I think it'd be interesting, I think, to me, I think we should wait, the, I see, you know, Convergus and other companies like this, they're really big when they have a contract, but, you know, they had a place, they, they closed, they were pretty much shut down in Greenville, and they had 500 employees because they lost a contract. So this is something that we're doing for a long term, that actually might be a three-year, three-year deal, and then we have an empty lot again. So, so I think that's the, and they might lease it, but it might be empty, cause it was leased and it was empty for, you know, four or five months where they didn't have people working. So I think I'd like to hear more from someone, someone who looks at the slope and the, and city engineer.
Another thing, too, that I was saying to that particular point, looking from a business interest, cause that was my question before we came in, was you've, you've kinda created a whole different section out in the middle of nowhere. And it would be nice if you could develop, you know, some of that land for, 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 to increase the footprint of the shopping center, you know, at some point. But you put this out here, and it's really, I'm not sure what we've done, because there's not really any space to, to build around that parking. You know, that's always gonna be out there as a spur. The...
They can always build on the parking.
But the other, but the other situation would be, if I was in, based on the way that the thing was filled up this morning, if I was trying to buy whatever the old Curbs is, or any, or, or say the Dollar General moved out, I'd have no parking, because it would all be Convergus parking. You know, so that would be something that I would be concerned about as well. And I'm not sure how to balance those two concerns, but, but from a business standpoint, that would be something I, I think we ought to pay attention to.
I think Convergus is very, I can just tell you, they're the most, one of the most professional groups I have worked with. They're down to a science. They've got spreadsheets for everything. You've got answers for a lot of things. They knew about how many people come in per hour on their site. It's a flex time. It's not, what they wanted me to press upon you all, it's not, it's not a manufacturing facility where they come in at eight o'clock, and they're, you know, it's three shifts, that type of thing. It's, it's not run that way. It's flexed through the day. So what I can tell you is they've put a lot of effort into having this layout the way that would work for them. And they're the ones that are pushing it. That parking lot was dead, if you will, when Kroger had left.
Yeah.
And now you're surprised to see that there's cars in there. But they are on top of themselves very shortly. So we need to get it moving along. I'm a little disappointed that one guy can, who's had history, can complain about it, and now this slows them down. That's my disappointment. If we need to table it, to table it, that's what we'll do. But if we didn't do it at all, there's a very good chance that the problem is just gonna be exacerbated. It just will be. This is an opportunity, what I wanted to, if Steve had just called me before that, I would've told him, this is an opportunity to get this thing fixed. But...
So tell us how you wanna fix the slope.
Knowing that that may be the same owner, that's a discussion that we can have with Convergus and the tenant, or the landowner.
And I think that can happen in the next two weeks, correct?
To discuss, to discuss that.
So I think a meeting on site with water resources or environmental people, and I'd like to be there, and we can discuss that.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Okay.
Not to put words in your mouth, but...
No, I agree. I mean, I, I, I think, speaking for the commission, there are some concerns about the longevity of it, but this is a better situation than it has been.
Absolutely.
But if we wanna make sure it's the best situation, then it's worth two weeks.
We're just done the right way.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure it's done the right way.
Yes. And in, and in the big picture, two weeks. I know it's, there's a demand for it. If we can address these concerns, then two weeks is worth it.
And I'm certainly not suggesting that, well, I know better about their parking. I'm more concerned about the water and the slope, and that's it. You know, it doesn't really, that, it's, you know, there would be, we've talked about things like this, there'd be buildings there, and you'd still have the pervious surfaces or, you know, you know, up on the roofs, water would be flowing off of them, so, and they could do that by right.
But this is still an opportunity to address that.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna improve it.
And it, quite honestly, it may not even affect the timing in terms of going before council.
Right.
That, that was gonna be my next question. If it is two weeks, does that mean I'm back here in two weeks? Or, and how does that affect the council date, make it to the following month? I thought that's what we had pushed, because of that technicality on the date, and then we, we're still at the October 9th council meeting. So if we wait two weeks, I think it actually puts us out to November instead of October 9th.
What was your traffic study that set you back, correct?
Now, what set us back was the address of 2842 is not on the sign out front.
Which was your error?
Correct.
Okay. So the mantlehead's schedule in front of me.
It, it would take them to...
November?
Unless...
I can speak with the manager about keeping you on the October timeframe, just involved a little bit. What?
What I'm wondering is, is there a way we can do, I didn't know, and I said today, I mean, in two weeks we can do it, but if, if we go out with the E and S group, Kate, and we go out with you, and there is some kind of thing that we see on the slope, is that a condition that we can put on?
It, it may be a proffer, it may be...
I'm just trying to think of a solution, how we address that, so we know we're gonna get that.
I mean, honestly, I think the solution would've been having a solution by now, right? Having already looked.
And we had an issue that's gonna cause this delay, obviously.
So you didn't know about the slopes eroding?
No, I do, I saw erosion down there. But I fix those things in design, and that's not a planning and a rezoning issue.
Well, I, I think what the commission needs to understand is that this isn't going to exasperate it, right? And shame on me, I wasn't aware of the erosion issues. If I had, we'd have been discussing it before now, right? So, so I think the best approach is to go out and meet and see if we can come up with a solution.
But, well, I think we're ready for a motion on our end.
I'd like to make a motion to table it for two weeks, to allow time for, for their study.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Dye, opposed? So we're gonna recommend revisiting this in two weeks. Any other items for discussion?
Who's in this? No, sir.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second? All right. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. We are adjourned.